Good afternoon. It's Wednesday, February 1st, 2023. This is a school board workshop and the time is 12:01. Today on the agenda, we have the employee insurance, comprehensive support and improvement schools update, agenda review of the February 7th regular agenda, and the good of the order. Mr. Bernier, would you... Superintendent Bernier, sorry about that. Will you begin by introducing your human resource team?
More than happy to. This is a board presentation that was asked for for quite a long time. It's one of the issues that has been on a calendar listing for a while. Some of what originally reasons why this was called have since been rectified, but we still thought it was really important, number one, because the board asked it to continue to come forward, that you get some additional information, also a chance for us to share with the community the hard work that this board's done related to insurance and benefits, and some hard work that still needs to be done regarding some of our advisory committee work and what they asked us to look into this spring. And if you recall, I promised we would continue to make good on that promise in that recommendation of that finance committee. So I'm going to turn it over to two really good people in our organization. Rob Dotick, who is the executive director of Human Resources, and Bonnie McFarland, who works on... I know she has an amazing title, but we'll just call her All Things Insurance. So she does work with insurance and benefits management. So I'm going to turn it over to them. Mr. Dotick?
Yes, thank you, and good afternoon. Hopefully, my only role here today is to introduce Bonnie. She is an expert on insurance, and her title is Director of Insurance and Benefits Management. Go ahead, Bonnie.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for your time today. Very excited to be here before you today. We will be talking all things employee insurance. We can talk other insurances. I know you've had lengthy conversations on other insurance matters, but we'll talk about employee insurance today. And just as a quick agenda, we're going to recap a little bit of the presentation we made back in July, talk about the changes that have already begun, as Dr. Bernier was saying, the changes that will be coming very soon, and then happy to answer any questions that you guys may have regarding the information presented. So as you may recall, we brought a presentation to the board back in July of 2022, and the bottom line out of that presentation was that the district had the lowest total premium for insurance of any of our governmental entities in Lee County, but we also had the lowest employer contribution. And those two things together were resulting in a high employee cost for insurance. So with the... As I mentioned, changes have begun. So you may recall, we have got authority and bargained with our unions to increase that board contribution. So it went from the 8104 to 9213. That is for all employees within the district. And then for employees who enrolled any type of dependent. So in the insurance world, you have members, which are your employees, and then you have dependents, which is everybody else. So dependents could be a spouse, could be a child, could be multiple children, could be an entire family. Those are all called dependents in the insurance world. So if an employee elects to enroll anyone other than themselves, they get an additional $4,000 in a dependent subsidy. The change there just makes it divisible by 20 and 24 for payroll purposes, if you're wondering why it's such a weird amount. So for those who are enrolling dependents, they're receiving $13,214.40 towards their dependent coverage or towards their entire coverage on an annual basis. This quick chart just gives you an idea of what the current premiums, the new premiums, and that amount on both a paycheck basis and annual basis in terms of savings. There is some differences between the levels because the child and the children tier were collapsed into a single tier, but you can see it's substantial savings for those who are covering dependents on the district's plan. This was the chart I had brought to you back in July of '22, and I have inserted that green columns there. Those are the new rates. So you can see the old rates are right next to that, up to the right, and the green are how our new rates would look in that same presentation. This is our comparison to other districts around the state. And then this is that same comparison from other governmental entities. Again, the green is the new, and the one right next to that in the orange is the Lee County School District old. So you can see we're making significant progress towards getting into the realm of where other employers are. As Dr. Bernier mentioned, there are more changes to come. We have four ITNs, which is Invitation to Negotiate. That is a insurance version of an RFP, which is something you're probably much more familiar of hearing. It's basically this... They're two slightly different animals, but we're basically taking these six things to market is what this is telling you. The technical term is an ITN that you do with insurance. So these are the six coverages that are going to market. As Dr. Bernier mentioned, the Finance Advisory Committee was very interested in seeing the medical go to market. We are also taking the dental, the vision disability insurance, our group legal plan, and our EAP to market. As we market those, we will ask all proposers three basic things. First, to match our current plan design. That allows us to get apples-and-apples comparisons from all of the different vendors based on what we currently have. Then we ask the proposers to propose any enhanced designs. So in some cases, a benefit may change slightly over time. For example, if you have glasses, like I do, you may remember a time when progressive lenses were not covered. They've now become standard on a plan. So if we were bidding insurance and they added coverage for progressive lenses, that would be considered an enhancement to the plan because we're not really changing the whole plan. We're just kind of modifying some of the things to stay current. And then we also ask for the proposer to propose alternative plan designs. So if they have something amazing and new that they want to tell us about and propose to us as an organization, they have that opportunity to do that as part of the ITN process. Additionally, specifically with our medical insurance, we are going to be asking for both self-insured options. So that would be what's called an ASO or Administrative Services Only, where an organization would be administering the plan, but the district would determine what the plan design was, and we would also be responsible for the funding aspect of that plan design. We'll be asking for a fully insured option. So that's when we transfer the entire risk to a third party. They're responsible for the plan design, the funding, and everything. And we are just buying a plan essentially kind of off-the-shelf rack plan designs. We will, of course, try to match as closely as possible our current plan designs, but in a fully insured environment, you can't always do that. And we will also be asking, under both of those options, for a RX prescription... Sorry, insurance shorthand that I should have spelled out. Prescription carve-in and carve-out options. So what that means is, as the insurance companies are looking at the plan, they can propose a medical plan only. They can propose a medical plan with a prescription plan, or they can propose a prescription plan only. And so obviously, if you propose the two together, that's called a carve-in. If you propose them separately, that's called a carve-out. And what that allows us to do as a district is mix and match. So if we really like Firm A's medical plan, but we like Firm B's prescription plan, we could take that as a carve-out option and take those two and put them together and make a plan for the district. Or if we have a vendor who proposes a combination that we really like, we can take it as a carve-in plan, and we would buy essentially the medical and the prescription plan from the same vendor. I hope that makes sense. Kind of a lot of insurance jargon. So as we look to move forward with the ITNs, we are going to be issuing them on a rolling basis, but this is our Gantt chart that shows you kind of what activities are going to be occurring during what timeframe. As you can see, this is an involved process that will ultimately end with our open enrollment 2024. So about a year from now, our employees would be enrolling in the insurances that are selected as part of this process. We do intend... Our plan is to bring these to the insurance task force for approval and recommendation to the board in August and September, and bring them to the board in September and October as we're able to complete these ITNs on a rolling basis. And that concludes my presentation, and I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you to our staff. Board, I'll be brief. Just this is sort of a promise made and promise kept. The faculty... Sorry, the Finance Committee asked for us at the next opportunity to go out and bid our insurance programs. This is the point in time where the current contracts are reaching a logical conclusion. It is time for us to go back out to the market and to look at our insurance. But I think there's a number of questions in those last several slides that the staff is prepared to answer on your behalf because this is a complicated issue. Further complicated in our particular district by the market in which we shop our insurance. So I look forward to hearing your discussion and the interaction between you and Bonnie. And I will say, she is absolutely correct. We've talked a lot about insurance in the last several months, but that has been about property and storm and other types of insurance, specifically as to how we work with our employees to ensure they and their families are properly insured in the current medical climate. Looking forward to your discussion.
Board members, do you have any comments or discussion?
So thank you for saving me a board update on ITF Insurance Task Force. I have come to this table before and told them how fun it is to be in that group and how lively and amazing you guys are surrounding what might otherwise be considered a less-than-exciting subject, insurance. Bonnie, you are amazing, and I was really excited for you to come in front of the board today so that they could see the level of knowledge that you have and your ability to break down very difficult concepts in easy-to-understand language. I'm very grateful that you're in charge of this. If you could go back a couple slides to that timeline that you had right there. So you kind of glossed over that big bar in the middle of evaluations, voting meetings, and finalists meetings. And what I know from being on ITF is that that is a tremendous, tremendous amount of work when one bid goes out, never mind bidding every insurance and every benefit that the school district of Lee County provides to employees. So I just... I want the board to be aware that we have an insurance task force that is populated by several employees in your department and union membership and other employees. And they will all be volunteering, voluntold their time.
A little of both.
A little bit of both. And it's very intensive this year because there's so many different items going out to bid. They will be volunteering a lot of their time to read all of these proposals and come up with good recommendations. So if you have time to thank your ITF employees and people who are sitting on that, please do because they really... This is going to be hardcore, and you can see a lot of it happens over the summer when they're not necessarily on contract hours. So this is, you know, time away from vacation or whatever it is. I wanted you all to be aware of that. The other thing, and I have said this to Dr. Bernier before, communication coming from your department is as good as you can make it. That being said, I'm a user of these products, and I am frequently unaware of what's available to me. Why? Because I have 9,000 emails in my inbox, and when one comes from you, I just don't necessarily read it. But if your very capable, knowledgeable voice or face were to be on a video and you were to break that down, you or your staff or a cartoon or something, break it down in a way that I could understand it and then utilize all of these benefits that are available, that might be really helpful to me. I know that's a suggestion that I've made to Dr. Bernier in the past. And finally, Dr. Bernier mentioned the market in which we shop our insurance. I think that was code and a nice way to say the difficulty we have because of the fact that the market is so limited due to the structure of Lee Health. So there are a lot of insurance companies that will not even bid in Lee County because of the structure of our healthcare system, if I'm making sense to anybody. I don't want to slam anybody, especially another elected board, but it does make it tremendously difficult for us to get real competition in Lee County because of the structure of Lee Health. So I wanted to throw that out there as well. I don't have any questions because you educate me so well in ITF, but I'm very grateful for your work. Thank you.
Board members, any other questions? Yes, Ms. Jordan.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica. I couldn't have said it better. Actually, you did say it better because I was on the task force for a while, and you do learn a lot. And it is... I wouldn't have said it was exciting, but okay. It was actually a wealth of information and a lot of information at once. And so I did learn a lot, and I'm very appreciative of being on it. So just thank you. Thank you.
I have no comments. Ms. George?
I was just going to say thank you, and I'm glad that it's finally going to finance because I know that they have been asking, geez, for I don't know how many years now for this to take place. So I'm sure they're going to be very happy, even though there's a new board there. But I just wanted to thank you for all the information. And I do read everything that you sent out. I don't know about the videos. I don't know if I'd watch the videos, but I do read what you sent out. And I partake in all the opportunities that we have with our benefits and our health. So thank you.
Thank you. And if I could just take the liberty to remind any employees who may be watching that we are currently in open enrollment 2023 through February 10th. So as of me walking into this meeting, about 25% of employees have completed their elections. So we need to get that number a little higher by next Friday. Thank you.
I have something.
Yes, Ms....
So yes, thank you so much. It was such a simple way to break it down. But again, whenever this does go to play... And it's funny that you brought up what you just brought up because I know a lot of teachers sit there, and they don't understand, especially if you go back to the slide. That is Slide 6. That's a really, you know, that's a cumbersome slide. I know that a lot of educators or especially those that don't have any children yet or don't have a young family, it's hard for them to understand which one. So I appreciate all the opportunities that the district provides for teachers to get on. I know that there were a couple Zooms that you sent out that you could get on. So I would highly encourage any educator, staff member, anyone to take advantage of that Zoom time because I do think you do a great job of breaking it down. When you do go to bid and you go back to the slide that you talked about carve-in, carve-out, and a mix-match, if you will, regardless of whether that's dental and medical, vision, medical, dental. When you're going into the process of bidding, something that I think a lot of our staff is not aware of is that dependent care that is different from being a dependent versus dependent care that we allow you to pull... Or the insurance company allows you to put so much into a little account for those staff members that need childcare even throughout the summer. So I think that's something that needs to be broken down and simplified, that those are two totally different things. Dependent care is totally different than like your health savings account versus your childcare account. So that's the only thing I had. But thank you for doing all this legwork. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. And if I could encourage people who are looking to evaluate their options, we last year upgraded the open enrollment module to what's called Fluid. You might have heard about the Fluid upgrade to PeopleSoft. The benefit module is already upgraded to Fluid. And so I say that because it's very dynamic. You can go into that and purchase different insurances, and it will calculate on the fly how much you're going to be spending out of your pocket based on the plans that you have elected. And then you can go right back to the bottom and change them again and see how that changes your out-of-pocket maximums. And you can do that as often as you'd like during the open enrollment period. It's kind of like putting things in your Amazon cart. You can change what's in that option as many times as you'd like, and it will just save that information. And then once you have it where you want it to be, there's a submit enrollment right underneath the dollar that you'll be paying out of your checking account. And that's a great way for people to evaluate their options. We do have all of the information on the website in the employee portal. There's an entire section just for open enrollment. But if you want to know how much something's going to cost, you have to go look up all the individual things and do the math. If you just log into PeopleSoft, the system will do the math for you, and you can make those edits right there while you're doing it and see how that impacts your out-of-pocket maxes. So I hope that that new Fluid option is helpful to people. It also has a great little pie chart and all kinds of great stuff. So check it out. It's hopefully a really helpful, dynamic tool that we're implementing.
Yes, Ms. Jordan?
I have a question based on what I just heard. Because that just confused me now. The dependent care and the childcare?
So within our benefits, we have what's called a flexible spending account. Flexible spending account allows you to set money aside pre-tax for two purposes. There's what's called an unreimbursed medical flexible spending account. That would be if you have medical expenses that aren't covered by a plan. Like you could even use your flexible spending for things like braces and glasses and things like that. Or you can use it to pay your copays with your insurance. And then there is a dependent care flex spending, which allows you to set aside pre-tax dollars for eligible dependent care expenses, such as daycare, after-school care, and that sort of thing for children up to the age of 13.
Okay, thank you. Because I always go insurance, and then I'm looking at daycare, putting a child in to be cared for. So I was like, how is that even... Okay, thank you for explaining that.
Sure. And we do... We have a benefits box, benefits@leeschools.net. If anybody has any questions, we have multiple people who respond to emails to that mailbox. We're happy to respond to that. We also... We have our phone rings on everybody's desk, so it'll be answered. If you have questions, just reach out, and we're happy to help.
Thank you. That was an excellent presentation. Dr. Bernier?
Yes, sir. As Mr. Dotick and Ms. McFarland leave the podium, I think as we wait for the next group to arrive, and I will address them in a second, if I could just take a moment to just reiterate to the community the support and the commitment this board has shown towards employee benefits. They did a fabulous job of helping to not only raise the amount of money for the employer contribution, at the same time, you also took care of the additional cost associated with what we know to be medical inflation. Medical costs go up every year. And one of the discussions that our employees often have with all of you, their fellow citizens, their fellow educators, and me, is they often talk about they get a raise, but they wind up spending it in their benefits for the additional cost. So not only did this board take care of the additional cost, they also raised the employer contribution. So I'm hopeful that no one is looking for $13,000 in their paycheck. While there will be significant savings, most employees, especially in the dependent care and in the dependent and with childcare, are going to be seeing an additional $4,000 a year that will be actually in their paycheck that they will not have to expend. So I know we still have other negotiations to continue with our unions. But I think if you think about a compensation package, it doesn't always come in a straight raise. Sometimes it comes in other ways. But this is legitimate money in a person's pocket that they can utilize for rent, for groceries, and for the other things that we so often hear about that our educators and our support professionals are struggling with. So I just thought it was, as we waited for the transition, a great opportunity to provide that accolade to the board and for your direction regarding this matter. This next presentation was actually a thought that I had that I shared with the previous board regarding an opportunity in October for our schools that had received a grade from the state of Florida that put them in the comprehensive support and improvement category with the state, or CSI. September 28th happened, and we moved that presentation. And we are now ready to come back and have that conversation with all of you regarding what our CSI schools are doing, how things are progressing with the state because the state is heavily involved with us with all three of these sites. The sites are G Weaver Hips Elementary School, Manatee Elementary School, and Fort Myers Middle. Seated at the podium right now is Dr. Shana Johnston, Executive Director for School Development with the elementary. Marsha Burr, Executive Director for School Development, again with elementary. With us today at some point will be Ms. Naus at G Weaver Hips, Ms. Sherman from Manatee Middle, and Mr. Brian Mangan, who is currently the principal at Fort Myers Middle School. The goal here is for you to understand where these schools are and where they're going. I also... I also want to remind you that you'll have to connect, and the executive directors will do a good job of helping us do that, you'll have to connect some of this information with the previous presentation from Dr. Matthew Kay about how schools are being assessed a little differently this year and how the reporting structures don't have as many components in them when you develop a school grade. So I'm going to turn it over to the executive directors at this time, but you'll have an opportunity to interact and work with our principals as well.
Good afternoon, board members, Superintendent Bernier, Ms. Dupree Bruno. We're, thank you for the opportunity to kind of give you an update on what's been happening in our CSI schools and how we are moving forward to address the concerns that have been identified at those schools. We are missing from the team at this moment Dr. Deborah Nos from G Weaver Hip. She's running into a little traffic from Lehigh, but she should be here any moment and so she will jump in at her time or we will bypass her and then come back. So they're all excited. The principals are excited to share with you. Today, we are going to give you a brief overview of the comprehensive support and improvement process. And it is a review for most of you. You have already heard this from Dr. Matthew Kay. Then we're going to give each of the principals and from each of the three schools, G Weaver Hips, Manatee, and Fort Myers Middle, an opportunity to tell you a little bit about the specifics of what's going on in their buildings. And then we'll address some next steps as a district moving forward. So for the review, as we have shared with you, has been shared with you previously, school accountability, school grades provide accountability for the public and serve as an information tool for parents and stakeholders about the progress of the school. Schools that receive an A or improve their school grades are, may be eligible to receive school recognition bonuses, distinctions, or other signifiers from the state that identify their excellent work. Schools that receive a D or an F are identified by the Florida Department of Education for comprehensive support and improvement, or CSI as it will be referred to frequently during this presentation. There are three ways in which a school can be designated as a CSI school. The first one is to have a school grade of D or F, to have a graduation rate of 67% or less, or to have an overall federal index below 41%. The three schools that we're going to be talking about today did earn a score of D on the last state assessment in the spring. And so that's why these three schools are in this designation. On this slide, you'll see on the side, the intention of the state is to pause accountability for this year because there is a new assessment, new benchmarks, and it's the year of setting the parameters of what a score means. So the intention is to pause accountability for this year. What that means specifically to our CSI schools in Tier 1 status, its first year in a CSI position, is that they can exit from CSI this year if they earn a C or higher. But no new schools will enter into CSI this year, nor will any schools progress from Tier 1 to Tier 2 for this school year. That is the intention from the state has expressed to us. As you can see in Tier 1 on this slide, the D or the F school, single grade of D, is in, they receive intensive supports and interventions both from the district and from the state. And this week, we are in the midst of our mid-year review with the state. They were at Manatee yesterday, Fort Myers Middle this morning, and they will be at G Weaver tomorrow to do their mid-year visit and talk about the progress and the next steps for those schools. So our three schools, as Dr. Bernier has already stated, G Weaver Hips Elementary, Manatee Elementary, and Fort Myers Middle Academy are all in Tier 1 of the CSI process. Those CSI schools in Tier 1 were required to have a school improvement plan submitted earlier than the rest of the schools in the district. It was reviewed earlier than other school improvement plans by the state prior to the mid-September. All were reviewed. Feedback was given to the schools and they were made adjustments based on that feedback from the state. The instructional reviews do happen quarterly. And so we've had one in November. We've had visits from monthly calls and one additional visit from our state-assigned representative. And then again, this week, we are having our mid-year review. The district and school also has some, schools also have some specific requirements that come along with being in Tier 1 of CSI. And the progress monitoring data review process, PMDR, is done thoroughly with those schools to make sure that they are making progress. At this, I'm going to turn it over to Linda Mayer.
Afternoon. I want to begin by saying how blessed we are to have three fabulous instructional leaders at these three schools to do the hard work. And they truly is, they dig in and do everything that's asked of them and more and are just stellar. So just want to thank them and their passion for student learning. Can't say enough about you. This past summer, we attended, started off the summer with the leaders of the schools, executive directors, directors of curriculum, and we intended a summer training with the state. Our first summer BSI Bureau of School Improvement summer training. During that training, they focused on just three things. It was very tight. They're going to focus on the benchmarks. Benchmarks is a word I will probably interchangeably say standards. We still have standards. We have standards for science. We have standards for our history classes. Those are still standards-based. But benchmark is the new term for all the ELA and the math work that they're doing. The expected learning outcomes now are called benchmarks or standards. So if I interchange them, I'm sorry. So that was our first work, did really dig down, look at the standards and the level of the standards in the student thinking. They're going to take the FAST assessment this year. It stands for Florida Assessment of Student Thinking. And it truly is looking at how we think about solving math problems. Can you do it in your head? I was just in a class today walking and the students were doing it in her head. And the teacher was really excited because she thought about it a different way than what the traditional way of a two-step equation, you know, subtracting them. But it was just great. It was exciting. And she's like, yeah, that's great. Maybe somebody else can learn that way. So it was an exciting time. Engagement, and that was a piece of it, is how do we get students engaged in the learning? Truly engaged and wanting to learn. And that's a whole piece. And they walk with us as we walk our schools and our classrooms and they talk to us, what's the next step you can do? How deep into that benchmark are you going? The level of rigor. Today, there were some classes that were all the way down. They were getting into the depth of the rigor in some of the classrooms. And some, they were right at the surface level. So there's opportunities to continue getting better at what we do. And so that's when we walk with them, that's what we're seeing. So I've learned a lot myself and I think my cohorts would say the same thing, that we've had great opportunity. Our school strategic plans are developed over the summer also. We did those the first, I think it was the 7th and 8th of June this past year. And they're linked up there so you can go deep into those. Those are really, I would say, those are comprehensive approach to supporting teaching and learning so that we guarantee that we raise student achievement. Now, we hope we do, but we guarantee it because we've been strategic in our approach. So that's what that is. And then the next thing you're looking at is school improvement plans. And that is a state requirement for these three schools. Now, in our district, we've always required all of our schools to do them. So we still do those. The state did work with the three principals and their teams this summer, and they wrote the plans with them. So those plans were developed with our schools under their guidance. On the next sheet, you'll see where it's a state and district approach. And that first outlines what the state has, and Marsha's already talked about it, was we attended the summer training. They come quarterly for progress monitoring, quarterly targeted classroom walkthroughs, monthly plan implementation checks. So they're here with us all the time. They call and check. We have one, Mrs. Spratley, that stops in monthly with us. And then the big team that was here today, I think we had four members, three or four members here today. Then they bring a bigger team in and then we split up and we walk classrooms and we see what's happening in the classroom. Is it improving? Is it getting better? Do we see students really engaged in deep learning in the classroom? Our human resource team, Rob and his team, worked with the state requirements, within the state requirements of writing an MOU for our teachers to make sure that our schools were staffed. And so we worked within that. Their team did a recruitment fair just for the three schools on, I think it was December the 15th, December the 15th. And the focus was just on hiring teachers for these three schools. In the MOU, they also gave them two long-term subs at each one, so they're there all the time. So hopefully, they don't have to use them in a class to cover, that they get subs. And these two subs can go in and then provide coverage. So teachers, I can go and I watch Marsha, who's a fabulous ELA teacher, I can go visit her classroom and see that. Or I can go watch a math teacher, you know, during my planning time. It gives the teachers an opportunity with these substitutes on campus to go out and visit. District staff were reassigned. We had four staff members. We have one that volunteered, which I was so excited about. That just showed her passion for student learning and made sure we took them flowers on their first day there at the schools and just thanked them and said how much we appreciate them going out and supporting the schools. And then as far as our academic team, academic services, we had to create a new walkthrough. The state came in and said, okay, this is what we're looking at, the benchmark, the rigor of the benchmark, is it being taught and addressed? Are students engaged in it? Is the work aligning? I say it's really simple. As a previous turnaround principal, it's always, to me, it's kind of a simple thing. Here's your standard benchmark. Here's what the teacher's doing. She's teaching that standard and benchmark to a high level. And here's the student work. And that work supports the learning of that benchmark. And if we just get that triangle going, I think great learning happens in every classroom. So our walkthrough tool, we tweaked it and we, with our team back here, we continue to walk classrooms and walk classrooms. And today, I was noticing on the one we were doing, it was like 100, over 100 and something walkthroughs in this small school with 20-something teachers that we had accomplished in just a short period of time. So the walkthrough, again, just focuses on those benchmarks, rigor, achievement, what's happening. It's really looking at student learning. Are the students learning? And measuring that. School development, weekly support. So we have a team that goes out and they participate in the walkthroughs. They participate in giving feedback to the principals. That's just weekly out there. Professional development is out there. They're tailoring their professional development based on the needs of each of the schools. So one school might need something to engage the students more. What does differentiation really look like? You know? They had to understand differentiation doesn't mean you're doing centers. Differentiation means, Marsha needs these three words to learn vocabulary. Shannon needs these. They don't have the same words at all. That's true differentiation. What do they really need? So that's a part of that that they train on. They also train on classroom engagement and how to manage, because we've got a lot of first-year teachers at these schools. So they support classroom management of the class. They work in the PLCs. I know at some of the schools, at Bryan Schools, their team was there today because they have theirs on Wednesday. So they push in and they're part of that to make sure that conversation is rich and is focused on the data and moving that data. Student support services, they've gone out with the ELL several days of the week that they're out there at the schools supporting the students. Our ESE department is out supporting. We have a response team, Lynn Harrow brought back to us, and it's, it allows the principals and their leadership team to actually walk classrooms together and then walk outside the room and talk about what did we see? Are we in alignment with what we see? Do I think it looks, is it rigorous? Do you think it's rigorous? What made you think that? So this response team goes out and they walk the halls. They take the walkies from the principal and APs and they walk the halls and make sure it's a safe environment there and provide that for them. And then leading and learning team, there are two teachers at, I don't know how many or any school, but there's two teachers at Fort Myers Middle and they push in with a first-year teacher. My next slide is just an overview. Our principals are going to go really deep into this, but I'm going to just do a broad overview of this form because it's a little different for the elementary and middle. As we said, each one is just based on proficiency. And that's our target for all of our students. Every student here should be a Level 3 to 5. They should be on level. That's our goal. So they're going to be taking the FAST this year, the Florida Assessment of Student Thinking, that prior year current student. So what that means is that whole column, and I'm not going to go down and read it all to you, but that column is saying, okay, who showed up at Dr. Nos' school this year in grades 3, 4, and 5? And what were their previous FSA scores? So the group that's sitting there, so you're comparing apples to apples, not the kids that left in 5th grade and went on to middle school. No, no. Who's sitting there? So that's the data they're going to be sharing with you. And then progress monitoring 1. And let me just, I'll ask my team members here if I forget something to jump in. But progress monitoring 1, you're going to see, and the score's going to be very low. It is an end of the year. It's just like they're taking the PM 3. So it's the end of the year assessment. It is an adaptive assessment, so it doesn't frustrate the children, which I love. As they're taking the test and as they miss questions, then it goes back down. And when they miss enough, that test is over. It doesn't, they don't sit there and get frustrated. So it's an adaptive test in ELA and mathematics. So that is an end-of-the-year test they've taken already twice. So they've taken PM 1, and last Friday was our last day. We just finished PM 2. Did I miss anything? No? Okay. Dr. Bernier?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, so let's, before we move on into the next diagram, let's just stop here for a second because I think this is really valuable for us. So the prior year current students, remember what Dr. Mayer just said was that is former FSA data.
Yes, sir.
So that's the previous test. Remember in Dr. Kay's presentation, one of the reasons why learning gains can't be calculated because we can't take last year's test, which was FSA, and compare it to the new FAST exam. So that's why you'll see a differentiation in score. You'll see a school score, a district score, and a state score. And the prior year to PM 1 will look very different. But I encourage you to look at that comparison because it'll jog additional questions. But I think the other piece is to look at progress monitoring 1 and see where these schools stand, not only with the school, but with the district, and then with the state. And then we'll see the progress in progress monitoring 2. Again, no excuses. I've been, I've seen this presentation. The principals came to cabinet. They did amazing work. They are owning their data. They're willing to move forward. But I think those are critical components before we get into the actual data slides that show us that. So I appreciate the chance, Dr. Mayer, just to interrupt briefly and just sort of establish a thinking point for us as we move into the next slide and then we move into our first principle.
Yes, sir. And they compare this with our district. So a lot of times even the scores will look low. Maybe you'll hear an 8% or 10% score. But our district at this time might be 25% in that area. So it might not be as far off the mark as you think so. And I can always share any of that data with you that you'd like at another time. At this time, Dr. Nos is going to step up.
Good afternoon. I'm Deborah Nos and I'm proud to be representing G Weaver Hips Elementary. Thank you very much. All right, we've got two microphones. No doubt you can hear me now. Hello, I'm Deborah Nos and I'm very proud to be representing G Weaver Hips Elementary School as the principal. So as was mentioned, the first slide that I will review is our progress monitoring from PM 1 to PM 2, which ended last week. In the first, in the middle column, the light blue progress monitoring 1, you'll see our ELA scores and a comparison to the district scores of 3 through 5 and the state comparison as well. Last week, we ended with improvement in our ELA in grades 3 to 5, up to 22% in that achievement level. And there's a comparison again to the district and the state. So we have grown and will continue to do so. In math, the same thing, at 40, 4%, excuse me. And we've increased to 14% in a comparison to the district and to the state. In science is a different assessment. And you can see our current score is at 20%. There was not a progress monitoring 1. And the district is at 29%. So I'm going to talk to you about what we've been doing this year. At the top, you'll see that's the beginning of our cycle. But if you'll start with me on the left-hand side, we started long before the school year, this summer. On the left-hand side, developing our school improvement plan and our strategic plan with a very serious focus. This collaborative strategic approach has everything focused on quality instruction. So our goal is to have instructional practice specifically related to that benchmark alignment where everything is where everything is related to the benchmark. At the top of our cycle, at 12 o'clock, we started with professional development. As mentioned, these benchmarks are new, and we have many new teachers at G. Weaver Hips. So we started from the basics. What is the benchmark? How do we break it down? How do the students learn it? How is it introduced at the beginning of every lesson? What are those key verbs and key vocabulary words that need to be known? And how do we show that in a common board configuration, so that it's the same in every room? So we came up with a school-wide expectation for that. Next, down at 3 o'clock, we started planning. With the support of academic services, we have planning on Wednesdays for our PLCs, and we're using a backwards design model. This was new at our school. We have a new template that we're using that was designed by the state, shared with us, and then tweaked with the support of academic services, so that we can all be working with the same tool. We came up with a school-wide expectation. What happens in the pre-planning time? What happens during planning? And then what about post-planning, when we review? How did it go? Where do we go from here? Then down at 5 o'clock, take a look at professional development. We looked at the instructional strategies that teachers are using. That also started back in the summer, when 13 of our teachers participated in a Kagan Structures training. We participated three days together with administrators, we brought that back to the school, and then we've continued on with more Kagan Structures and thinking maps. We focused on the distributive summarizing, things that we know are high-yield instructional strategies that are taking place in the classroom. And we also added something special. It's called WIT Wednesdays, W-I-T. And you're going to ask me what that means. It means whatever it takes. That's what we do on every other Wednesday. At 7 o'clock, you'll see our professional development started on small groups, classroom centers. We needed, again, a strategic way of looking at what are the expectations in our school. So in collaboration with professional development, we created a very powerful way of presenting that. We incorporated a two-hour time into the day where our PCT was able to model what the expectations are. So we came together as teams, third grade, fourth grade, for examples, one at a time, and we sat together and we viewed a model classroom, and we had great discussions around it, and we used the same tool, that walkthrough tool, that we've been using every day in the classrooms. And then up at 9 o'clock, you'll see what are our next steps as we're moving forward. There isn't a minute to waste, and we're very busy. So we're looking at coaching, not only for me as an administrator, my assistant principal and I are doing all of these training sessions with our teachers, with our coaches, and we're looking at tiered level of approach to support for our teachers. So we are participating in coaching the Lee County Way, we are participating in our PLC training that's ongoing, we just started that last week, in facilitating in the best way possible for those PLCs. And we're also working with our teachers to develop individualized plans, what they need, what they see as their strengths and weaknesses, and how we can support that. And then over on the right-hand side, you'll see our impact. The impact is always, of course, quality instruction for students, and the outcome is student data will prove that. So together with our academic team, the executive directors, everyone that comes to the school walks with us. We walk together, we have those discussions when we come out of every class, and we give immediate feedback to the teachers with our walkthrough tool. We have our little cards that have been shared at other schools, and as they're improving it, they let us know, and we continue to give those out to teachers. So we're going to see improvements in the future, and I'll be glad to be able to share those with you. Thank you for your time. I will now introduce Diane Sherman, who is the principal at Manatee Elementary School.
Good afternoon, thank you. I'm Diane Sherman, the principal at Manatee Elementary, and I am very excited to share some of the wonderful things that are happening at Manatee. In front of you is our data. Again, the previous year, our school was at 24 percent for ELA proficiency, this is levels three through five. Progress monitoring one, we were at 11 percent. And last week, we finished our progress monitoring two, and we are now at 20 percent proficiency. And in math, prior year was 31 percent. We started the year progress monitoring one at 6 percent, and last week, we finished the progress monitoring two, and we are now at 17 percent. Our science is, we only assessed for progress monitoring two, and we're at 16 percent for science. So I'm going to share with you some of the things that we are doing to adjust, because our goal is to get to 45 percent. One of the items, of course, is professional development, and like Deborah Nauss, our school as well has many beginning teachers, and so professional development is very important. A lot of the same professional developments we have done at Manatee as well. We've surveyed our teacher to find out what their needs are, and we've offered professional development with Kagan, with strategies for our ESOL students, because many of our students do speak another language. We've done some professional development with small group instruction, because we really need to target the individual needs of all of our students. But one of the most powerful professional developments that we've done is we met with each of the grade levels, and we were able to carve out a two-hour time where we were able to sit with our teachers, go through the walkthrough tool, because that's something that we're doing a lot. We're walking through the classroom as administrators, we're walking with the district, and we're also walking with the state. And we wanted to take that mystery out of the walkthroughs. So we sat, we brought our teachers in, we explained the walkthrough, we went through every single area, and then we actually went into a classroom, and each teacher did the walkthrough, and they did it individually. Then we came back and we debriefed, and it was very powerful, because it took so much of the mystery out of, you know, what is it that they're coming to see me do? And so this was something that the teachers thanked us for, and so that was a professional development that I think was very powerful. I try in my weekly notes, I send, I send a note home, or a note or an email to all of my teachers and staff on Sundays, and within that, I try to put in strategies, put little videos, put examples of things that they can try during the school, during the school week. We also have been able to get some funds through a grant called UNISIG, and that grant has enabled us to give teachers an extra hour and a half a week of planning time. So that is something I think that's going to make a really big difference. Also, we've made some changes in the classrooms, where based on data, we've seen some of our teachers who have more potential with some, a certain grade level or a certain subject area. So we've made some strategic moves based on our teachers and their strengths. The next section is the impact. So the impact evidence, of course, is our data, and though FAST, we don't have any longitudinal data, we do have data for IREDDI, which is the other progress monitoring tool that we've been using. And looking at that, we are seeing trend. When I look at quarter-two trends in ELA and quarter-two trends in math, we are doing better than we have been in terms of quarter-two. So I'm very, very happy with the progress. Also, of course, our walkthroughs, you know, walking classrooms, we are able to look at that rigor, and we look at rigor in three areas. The rigor of the instruction, the rigor of the questioning that's happening in the classroom, and the rigor of the task. And those are the big three areas that we are focusing on with our teachers. And in looking at the data, we are seeing that rigor is happening in our classrooms. Also, the other thing that we're tracking is attendance. Our school has had some attendance issues, and so because of that, we have put in some incentives. We've got classrooms who are competing against each other with their attendance and having little parties. Actually, we're doing extra recess, because that's what they love. And then we're also having the students track, so they have in their binders or in their student planners, they have a calendar, so they're actually going in and putting in a P when they are present, and so having them become more accountable for their attendance. We also have a mentoring program, and our mentoring program is also in one of our strategies, but the mentoring program also has an impact on our attendance as well, because it's not just a mentoring program for those students who just need somebody to check in with them every day, but we also have a mentoring program for students that have attendance issues, and we let them know that it's important that they're here, we're glad that they're here, and having that one-on-one relationship with the student is really making a difference. The other area is strategies. Some of the strategies that we are doing, we've got support from the district in terms of our PLCs, they are coming and supporting us with PLCs. District is supporting us with our walkthroughs, providing coaching opportunities as well. We have responders from the professional development department that are coming in to allow us to be able to do the walkthrough, so they are there to respond to issues that might be happening in the school, so that we are available to then do some walkthroughs. We have leading and learning teachers from the district that are coming, and they're coaching some of our beginning teachers. We have our PCTs, which are peer collaborative teachers. They are also providing professional development, coaching, modeling. And we're also starting next Monday an after-school tutoring program, which we're excited about. And we're also going to be starting a science club. So we've identified 38 students that have the potential to become proficient, and myself and both of my assistant principal are going to be working with a science specialist from the district, and we're going to be teaching science. So we are sure that these students are going to become proficient. And again, we meet with our student support team every week. These are the people at the school that deal with attendance and behavior and MTSS. We meet weekly to discuss individual students, and we also meet with our leadership team every week as well to be able to talk about the kids and talk about the instruction and the curriculum. Interventions, we have interventions in ELA for 60 minutes every day, and then we have interventions for math, which is right now 30 minutes every day. And we have ESE teachers as well as an ESOL teacher who are pushing into classrooms to support our teachers. At this time, I would like to introduce Brian Mangan, the principal at Fort Myers Middle.
Good afternoon. I'm Brian Mangan, the interim principal at Fort Myers Middle Academy, and I really appreciate the opportunity to be here with you all today. To begin with our data, from PM1 to PM2, it is trending in a positive direction. However, there is considerable work that still needs to be accomplished to increase student proficiency, and that work is ongoing. I'd like to be able to highlight the collaborative strategic approach that is ongoing at Fort Myers Middle by focusing on two groups of individuals, our teachers and our students. To begin with our teachers, staffing persistent vacancies is a significant challenge, especially for our core academic instructional positions. This has been mitigated by the collaboration between human resources, academic services, and our staff at the school. Since the December 15th hiring event, we've been able to add five additional staff members to Fort Myers Middle. One of those is a unique individual that came from the FGCU STAR intern program. That was Dr., Mrs. Rivera from the recruiting department linked us up with that individual. We brought the person out to our school, conducted an interview, walked our campus. As you can imagine, he's young, he looks like one of the students, but he didn't blink, wanted to be there. So we spent the week before winter break letting him get used to our processes and procedures and shadowing teachers, setting up his classroom, and as of the beginning of semester two, he's actively taking on one of our classrooms in math seventh grade, which was desperately needed. Additionally, we were able to hire four individuals at that hiring event, one for English Language Arts, who started right after the break, one from math that came on about a week and a half after the break, just because moving through the HR process is something that must be done with fidelity. And then most recently, we had an ESE teacher start with us, and I'll talk a little bit about, more about where that ESE teacher will be impacting our students. The fourth individual is another math teacher that is coming from Pennsylvania, closing on the house in the 17th of February. We expect her to be in the classroom before the end of this month, so that's very exciting for us as well. Additionally, the two long-term substitutes that have been mentioned are actively in two of our classrooms for English Language Arts, and while we are happy to have their services and they're working well with our department members and our coaches from the district, we are continuing to advertise and still seeking out those permanent solutions to our staffing needs. Outside of that, we are staffed up at Fort Myers Middle, which is a good thing. The other thing that we benefited from was our master schedule review, and that was done with the aid of Mrs. Houchen, Mrs. Mayer, and Mrs. Mark from the academic services team, where they helped us streamline and work through some of our scheduling issues that has helped to mitigate some of those issues with classrooms without a permanent teacher. By consolidating and streamlining, we were able to reduce some of those vacancies that we were experiencing. In regards to professional development, just prior to the winter break, all of our teachers were trained in the teaching in the 54-minute block. It was modeled on the same training that our high school teachers went through in the summer, and so our leading, our leading and learning teachers came out and did that training, but it was also strategic, because we wanted to start professional development for our teachers on a weekly basis at Fort Myers Middle. And we do that on Tuesdays, and it is compensated for those who participate. We do require it for our new teachers and those that are on a higher-tier level, but it is optional for all of our teachers to participate in well. What we did there at the beginning was to focus on classroom management. As we came out of the break, we wanted to shadow what we did at the beginning of the year, which was reinforce our wave of expectations, which is our expectation for students in the classroom and on campus. And by doing this each period of the day, it kind of mimicked what we were doing in professional development, which was helping our teachers with their classroom management. A well-ordered classroom leads to better student engagement and better student performance on assessments and related items. The other parts of our professional development, as we look out past the classroom management, is going to be tied in with what Mrs. Nauss and Mrs. Sherman have said, questioning, rigor, and engagement. Those are focuses for us at Fort Myers Middle as well. One of the things I would like to mention is the Promethean panels. We were very fortunate to have that. We were very fortunate to have that expedited at Fort Myers Middle, so just before the winter break, they were installed throughout the campus. And then as we came out of winter break, we had training from Mrs. Pappas for the entire staff. And that training had an immediate impact, and I'll just share a quick anecdotal. Our 7th grade science teachers were anticipating about four days for a recent topic, but between the use of the Promethium panel and its interactive nature and the students' engagement with it, they found that they were able to demonstrate student mastery within two days. So that's found time where we can go back and look at those benchmarks and standards that Mrs. Mayer was talking about, that we need to sharpen up and increase our students' capabilities around those. Mentioned also previously is the coaching cycle. We are very similar to the coaching cycle at the other schools, so I'm not going to belabor the point, but we do benefit from not only our internal coaches, but incredibly deep support from academic services and professional development, Mrs. Harold, Dr. Spiro's departments. They're there with us on a regular basis daily. One of the things we talked about is the push-ins, and so not only are these coaches working with our teachers during their PLC time and all, but they are also in the classroom, whether they're modeling the instruction, observing our teachers, providing them feedback. And in a lot of cases, they're simply working with kids when they're in the room because they're teachers first. The instructional walks, again, very similar to what we're doing at our fellow CSNI schools. One of the things that Fort Myers Middle did was steal wholesale what Mrs. Nos was doing at G. Weaver with the leave-behind card. You take great ideas like that and you steal shamelessly, and you put them in place at yours. And so thank you, Mrs. Nos. And so the other thing that we have taken that with us at Fort Myers Middle is those intentional conversations afterwards, just like they do where they provide the feedback to the teacher. We circle back at a non-instructional time for that teacher and had that one-on-one conversation. What went well? What's an opportunity for improvement? And to answer any of their questions. So that's kind of where we're at. Failed to mention, these classroom walkthroughs don't happen without the responder coverage that Mrs. Mayer mentioned before, whether it's Mrs. Duncan's team from Student Services or Mrs. Harold's team from Professional Development. To give us the peace of mind to turn our radios down, leave the campus in their capable hands, and go into those classrooms and do this engaging work where we can do it with purpose and with fidelity, it doesn't happen if I'm worried about what's going on in the hallways, the lunchroom, et cetera, et cetera. The other group of individuals I want to discuss is our students. Really, that begins before we even get in the classroom, and it's in our common planning time. We do this on Wednesdays, as was mentioned earlier, and we have those academic services coming in. And again, the benchmark, the rigor, and the questioning are big focuses for us in there. One of the things that we're working now is now that we have PM2 data, we see where we've had successes, but more importantly, we see where we have our opportunities for improvement. And so what we're working with there is where do we find that time to reteach? Whether it's taking advantage of bell ringers in math to go back to those key topics that we might not have hit as well as we needed to? Or is it an opportunity where teachers trade students, so the teacher who has had better gains in one area works with those, the groups of students that really need it, and at the same time, those students who are doing well with it work with the other teacher in other areas of need? Mentioned before that our English Language Learners from Mrs. Mayer. We also benefit from push-ins from the district. We have folks there four days a week, working with our teachers and students. They have helped us with our master schedule as well by clustering students strategically. We don't put all of them in one class at one time, but small groups of them are strategically placed so that when they're there to help us out or our own ESOL specialists are on campus, they are working with those teachers in those classrooms, and they're also working with those students, kind of getting the double bang for the buck. Part of the work that the ESOL PLC is doing also is highlighting Strategies of the Month, and that's what we're doing with anticipation guides for the month of February. And each month, we will roll that out, provide the teachers with the resources, do some deliberate training, and also provide modeling opportunities in the classroom. Mentioned before that we had one of our hires was in our ESC program. Historically, Fort Myers Middle has had a learning lab. We weren't able to stand one up at the beginning of this year, but through the work and the collaboration finding this individual, they started on Monday. We didn't throw it right into the learning lab right away. We're giving her this week to work, get to know our IEPs, get to know our students and processes and procedures. But come this Monday up, our learning lab will be stood up, and that's a great way to do one-on-one intensive assistance for those students that would not be appropriate in a regular classroom setting. The last thing I'd like to highlight is something that is relatively unique in the district. It's our partnership with United Way. They do so many different things there, and I can give you a laundry list, but I'll just highlight two. It's the Ripples Explorers Program. It's a before-and-after-school program that is free to all of our students. That's rare. And it goes at 7:30 in the morning till the time we start, about 9:20, when we ring the bell and start doing breakfast and all. And then it's after-school from 4:00 to 5:30 when we have the activity buses run. Two of the things they do is Power Scholars, where they work and tutor with our students who have the need, and also STEM enrichment, because that is for our students that are doing well and yet needs that extra challenge. And so that is just a scratching of the surface, what United Way does for us. With that, I'll turn it over back to Dr. Johnston. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mangan and Dr. Nos and Ms. Sherman, for sharing your insights into the strategies that you're implementing at your school. And like Mr. Mangan just said, this is really just the tip of the iceberg of the strategies that are being implemented at these three schools. So I'm going to be sharing a few next steps as we continue this work with our CSNI schools. So the weekly support from school development, curriculum and instruction, and professional development will continue, and you heard a lot of those strategies as a pattern within the three schools. The classroom walkthroughs will continue weekly at the schools with the focus of benchmark alignment, rigor, and engagement. I feel like we can all stay those together, benchmark, alignment, rigor, and engagement. You heard that several times, but that is the name of the game for improving schools. Rigor, we just want to touch on, when we talk about rigor, we're really talking about the student tasks and if they're aligned to the rigor of the benchmark. So for example, when we go into, one of the benchmarks, and I'm elementary-minded, so is to identify and explain the details that give meaning to the overall text, okay? Sometimes we go in and we see teachers just having the students identify the details, but they miss the part where they need to go and make sure the students can explain why those details give context to the overall meaning, and that's where the rigor comes. So that is our eye when we're looking in the classroom walkthroughs. We will continue to monitor the systems in place around benchmark mastery, making sure that the teaching and learning cycle is in place where students have multiple opportunities to learn. And then finally, monitoring and data reviews at the state and district level will continue. The state focuses on the implementation and the impact of a tiered coaching system for teachers, trend data for classroom walkthroughs. And I just have to say, not only are we so proud of the work that the principals are doing, but also the teachers and the students. We are seeing a tremendous growth in the walkthrough indicators from the first time we walk through until, just say, yesterday when the state was here at Manatee, tremendous growth that was very celebrated, and it was just a wonderful thing to see. So we're making progress there. And then, of course, the progress monitoring data. The district, we are holding data chats now with each school principal, not only these three schools, but with all of our principals. And some factors that we're considering in those data chats are identifying student by student, what benchmarks still need to be mastered, and what specific instructional strategies are being implemented so that we can ensure that every student is learning. And the goal around all of this is to collaboratively work together to move students to levels three, four, and five, and then sustain the students that are already at levels four and five. So we're not forgetting about those students either. So at this time, we appreciate your time, and we'll turn it over to the superintendent for comments and board discussion.
Board chair, members of the board. Lots to process there. I'm glad we had a shorter insurance presentation because I think great opportunity, and I want you to know that these principals are pioneers. This is something in previous systems I was accustomed to by bringing principals forward related to their school, the hard work that they do each and every day, so that you could get a feel for what you already know to be a very complicated process. If it was really, really easy to educate all children and turn them all into proficient based upon the exams, the whole state would be rated an A. There's really difficult work because our children arrive to elementary school from all different families, from all different walks of life, some of them speaking a foreign language or a language other than English, some of them speaking no language, some of them who've had ripe, wonderful adult relationships as they've grown and come to kindergarten reading, others that still don't understand basic phonemic awareness. That matter can get further complicated at middle school because while the children don't all arrive in the same way, the disparate scores sometimes can be exacerbated. They can grow even wider as children progress through a K-12 system. So these are the first principles that I know of under current administrations that have been asked to come with their grade and with their school improvement plan and with the state hovering and with every human being in the district hovering, but hovering in the appropriate ways to help lend support in an attempt to remove them from a CSI list. And while the data, when you compare FSA to the first FAST progress monitoring piece, you can see that gap, but what you can also see is the progress that continues to be made, and we still have time. I remind you that on January 9th, these principals were also present in a principals' meeting when we talked about three big buckets. We talked about hope and optimism and how important it is for them, and these three individuals in particular, but all principals, to find even in the midst of all this work, the ability to celebrate with their faculty both hope and optimism, because what that drives is purpose and impact. When people feel in a school building that they have a purpose and that they're making an impact, that environment starts to change, and it's through the leadership of these three individuals where that change is starting to occur. It's palatable there. And some of them have been there since the beginning of the year, and they've been hard at work prior to the beginning of the year. One of the other individuals really started just a few short weeks before the holiday and has done an amazing job of establishing a culture and establishing a process. The other big bucket was focus and urgency. They are, like many of our principals, the rock stars and the poster children of those things. They have laser-like focus on what they need to be working on, and they have a sense of urgency maybe that some other individuals don't quite grasp because they're not in the same position of what could have been, without a state pause, a Tier 2 label, which we didn't really explore in those graphs, I'm sure we'll get some questions about it. Finally, the last bucket was necessary and crucial conversations. When they talk about classroom walkthroughs and they talk about all the positive things they see when they step out of a room, those are the easy walkthroughs. There are walkthroughs that are conducted where they come out and they know that there's additional work that needs to be done. They are working on their own coaching, but they are working with coaches and staff. They're working with both the leaders here in our Academic Service Division, but also with the state to have those conversations that not only hold people accountable, but they're done in a manner and means that treats the human being and the educator as just that, a human being and an educator, because crucial conversations don't drive people from the building. If they're done correctly, they only enhance the process moving forward. So the three principals in particular, my thank you for being part of that pioneering process that I hope no other principal ever has to experience in the school district of Lee County, but for setting the stage for what we should be doing all the time, which is talking about teaching, learning, and outcomes, not just in our D schools, but in all of our schools. To the executive directors, thank you. There's extra gray hair or extra color, I'm sure that you've added. And to Dr. Spiro and his team, and Jennifer Coop and McCoy, who is still at Fort Myers Middle right now, helping to make sure that, as he said, that there's help and the opportunity for Mr. Mangan to feel like his school's in good hands while he's sitting here. So I just want you to understand that that help and support is still currently going on. So, Mr. Chairman and Board, I am excited about what this opportunity brings to our school district, what it demonstrates to our public, what it demonstrates to the families of these particular schools, and what it shows to our fellow principals about the representative leadership that they had here today, representing the principals of all of our other schools. So I look forward to your comments and questions, and not just the executive directors are available, your superintendent is as well, as well as the three principals. So we're going to probably place some interesting musical chairs at some point, but we will make that happen. Thank you.
Board members, any comments? Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you for the directors and the principals. I know this is hard work. I really do appreciate it. I know you've got, obviously, a lot on your plates right now, and do appreciate that. And obviously, I mean for academic achievement, it's the reason we're here today. So I have a question. I've had this question, I believe, with Dr. Bernier before, in fact. Are you looking in your analysis at any of the particular individually, their classes or teachers to see who is succeeding in those environments? And if so, are you seeing why they're succeeding? Maybe there's something particularly they're doing in that process. And I don't know if that goes to the directors or to the principals, or who should answer that question?
I think it'd be great if one of the principals, and I know the answer to the question, so do you, I think it'd be really great if one of the principals would come and maybe if one of the executive directors or a couple would sit back, let our principals take that spot, and I will ask if somebody in the back can help us work on the other microphone, potentially to see whether we can make that work while we are presenting, so an executive director also stays present with principals.
One of the things that... Okay, you able to hear me? Okay. One of the things that we do, and we get a lot, so we look at data and we break that down, of course, into the teacher as well. And so we know some of the teachers that are a little bit stronger than others at times, and that's where we can strategically ask a teacher that's done very well teaching a certain benchmark or in a certain area to do a professional development. And that is a great way for teachers to learn from each other because then that causes them to build trust, to go and ask another teacher, hey, can you show me how you did that? And so we do a lot of professional development within the school based on data and also during our walkthroughs. As we're walking through and we see a teacher that's doing a really good job with a particular standard, then we would ask that teacher to do some professional development or perhaps be a model teacher. Would it be okay if so-and-so comes into your classroom and watches you teach that?
One of the things I'll add in addition is if the students... One of the things I'll add in addition to that is we can trade students as well. Our schedule is built where the math department has common planning. And before, when staffing was a bit of a challenge, we were using them to cover classes a lot. Now that we're in a much better place, they can common plan not only on Wednesday mornings but during their planning period, and when they're looking at their data for their individual students and they see where their strengths and weaknesses lie, there's nothing wrong with two 7th grade math classes trading students. So the one teacher who's stronger in that benchmark takes those students that are weaker in it and works with them for a period or two, and the other students will go with the other teacher for whether it's a different benchmark or just enrichment, so that both groups of students are receiving a benefit of the teacher. But we're really trying to key in on where we have the greatest need.
And I will add to it by saying that those model classrooms, we call them pineapple visits. A pineapple is a welcome and open door for anyone to come in. So when we identify where something is happening in a terrific way, we want others to be visiting those classrooms, and we call those pineapple visits. And it's not that a guest walks in, a teacher walks in and visits and leaves. It's a very structured visit where they will be with a coach and identify what they're going to be looking for, and then have a post-conversation about it afterwards to determine how they can apply that in their own classroom. Additionally, because of the support in the... Additionally, because of the support in the PLCs, those are open discussions reviewing data to talk about those honestly. What is it you're doing in your classroom that's a little bit differently? We planned in the pre-planning and the planning stage, but now in the post-planning, how are your scores different than the ones I'm seeing in mine?
Okay, thank you. I think that's important that, you know, within these schools, there are those, those pockets at least and more now we're seeing of success and making sure that's, that's going out to, to other people in the district. I do have one more question. I believe this is more for the directors though. Um, so apologies for that. My question is at least historically, let's say the last five or six years, and I tried to look this up briefly, have any of these schools been Tier One schools before? And if so, how do we, and you've talked about obviously the changes and went through things and the culture and that stuff. How do we as a district make sure this is sustainable so that what we get up to that next level, we get up to a C that this doesn't happen again?
We, we think these are working now. You can hear us. Okay. Um, this is kind of a, back here having a joint conversation. It's been a while since we have had, um, any schools that have been in the CSI process in our district. Um, we had a number, Shannon knows the exact amount of years, twenty-three, about five or six, six years ago, six, seven years ago. But through the, some of the steps that you've heard us talk about this year, um, through this process, we have been able to avoid that. Um, I myself was at a, um, we, at that time, the term was DA school and, um, it was, um, not in Tier One. At the time I took over, it was, it had moved up the tier system. And I, it's, it is a, it is a series of interventions from everybody. It's not one person that makes that happen. It's not one group of individuals that makes it happen. It's a concerted effort by everybody from the district office, the classrooms, um, the leadership that makes that happen. Um, I just want to add one thing to what you were asked the question about previously. From my perspective, when you talk about the teachers, the difference in their ability and their, um, desire maybe to, to do this work, I don't believe any educator goes into the profession with the idea other than making a difference for kids. But what I feel like sometimes happens in our schools that struggle is the day-to-day grind of feeling like maybe you're not successful that kind of wears down in their determination or their confidence or their, um, performance. And so when you can address tho, that issue, as our principals have done extremely well, giving them hope, giving them, um, a, a sense of optimism that they can do it and providing the support and the crucial conversations to make it happen, that changes everything. And I think that's what we're seeing right now in these three schools is that the teachers are beginning to believe that they can impact some of our most challenging students in the district and make a difference for them. So that's my add-on to that question.
Thank you. Those answers my questions, uh, thank, you know, thank you for all of your hard work. I appreciate it. I'm rooting for everyone. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Jim Van Al.
Um, thank you, Mr. Fisher. Actually, um, that was one of my questions was how do we sustain the sustainability and continued supports because I think that's key, um, to the success of the schools. And he also asked a question about others, you know, has, how the schools been in this situation before, basically? And, um, I think the answer is yes, and you know, this isn't our first rodeo and it won't be the last, right? Unfortunately, kids are gonna be kids and everybody, their circumstances, pandemics, hurricanes, things that does affect the, um, our, our schools right down into the classroom. And, um, I, I feel that it really is regarding the staff. I think our staff, you know, the, uh, challenges of having the, the, the right people in the right places and just enough people, I think is what's probably been critical for our schools. And it doesn't really stop at these three schools, unfortunately. It's many. And, um, my concern is trying to be, or my focus would, for me would be being, trying to be proactive instead of reactive where we are today, unfortunately. And sometimes that's always a challenge because you don't know what you don't know and data comes much later and after the fact, unfortunately. Um, even though we have teachers in the classroom that are there and principals asking for support and I have to, I have to bring this to the attention, you know, I thank you, Mr. Mangan, for stepping up and jumping into this situation because you really just jumped headfirst into the fire, right? So, I mean, that, very, you have to be commended for that because that's, you know, you're taking on a, a task that is very challenging, that's been ongoing. This is just didn't happen yesterday. The Fort Myers Middle Academy has been asking for support and help and it's been difficult to staff that school as well as several others in Lee County. It's just the facts are we don't have enough teachers and staff and, and so I think my question really is what can we do or how can we help you get the people in there to continue your, to continue this endeavor and to bring these schools back up to where they need to be? Because I mean, that's what our job is, is how do we support you? And we're gonna support everything you told us today because you're the experts and we totally value, I, I can say that for myself, I totally value and respect that. And so, uh, my, my concern truly is, you know, how do we hire the people and what we can do to do that? And I, I think that is back, goes back up to the superintendent and us having that conversation. But awareness and accountability and just owning it is, I think, a first step, you know, and talking about it because we have to continue talking about it. You know, the, the need is great. So, um, that was, that was really, I, I did have one question. The breakdown in the teachers that we had to get there, back to the, to staff to get the support, how many at each school, like, I don't know, I forget what the number, it was over twenty, I think, right? And then like, what was the breakdown? What, who went to Manatee? Who went to Fort Myers? Who went to, um, the third school? Um, I'm sorry, everybody forgot the school, but...
I will be happy to give you, if you're asking for specific names related to...
No, no names, just like, did five go to Fort Myers, uh, Middle Academy, six went, you know what I mean? Just out of curiosity. I, I just want to point out where the need was really greater at, because I think that's significant, is the need. Thank you.
So the question is specifically when we had to go through the placement process for the, for the vacancies that still hadn't been filled, the board members requesting, what were the numbers that you received from district central office employees that were then transferred to your building?
Thank you.
At Manatee, um, we had none. We were able to put our coaches, um, into, into the classrooms. So that's what we did.
Thank you.
And at Che Weaver, we had one and she volunteered to come to us.
Awesome.
At Fort Myers Middle, we had one reading position filled and we had a hybrid approach by a, a group of, um, three individuals that, uh, were for English Language Arts and they actually helped to fill two positions by their collaboration and working with us.
So may I also share with you that this is an example of what principals do when everything comes together, when human resources, when individuals who really were seeking individuals and trying to find individuals. So while there were people prior to the holiday that were told they were going to have to go to work at those schools, these principals didn't just rest on that. They continued to hire, they continued to innovate, they continued to look for individuals within their own school building who could cover and, and become the teacher of record. And because they, part of this is creating a sense of family, um, and a commitment of everyone that wants to try to accomplish the same goal. So when you, when you think about where we were initially with potentially up to twenty teachers being transferred, they just didn't accept that. They continued to work to try to find the teachers, um, through our human resources department, through jobs, through specific job fairs for these schools. And, um, Dr. Mangan spoke very poignantly about specifically a, a high-performing intern.
So, so that leads me to one more question. So is there still a need at your school for teachers?
I think there is because, um, while we have the individuals from the district, um, they have a primary responsibility here. Students come first and that's what makes it so, so much better for us because this gives us that consistent, trained, certified individual in front of students. But I've already told Mr. Dodig, I want to continue to advertise because if there's somebody out there we can bring on board because I'm not just thinking about this year, I'm thinking about the year after.
Correct.
And so we will continue to effort to hire.
That's sustainability. That's the, that's the piece that's so important, I think. Uh, so, so then maybe I misunderstood. I thought we had twenty people go to different school, like, so that's why I'm confused now because they named twenty.
We had a conversation with up to about twenty people and we actually did make assignments. These principals can remember, this was prior to the holidays. These principals continued to work prior to the holiday and through the holiday with Mr. Dodig and as they've been able to hire, we've been able to release those individuals who were originally signed back to their jobs.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for all your hard work. Thank you and, and your continued work. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Patrica, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Chairpersons. The first thing that strikes me is the science of teaching and education that has completely lost on me. When I sit in a presentation like this, I am reminded that just because I went to school does not mean I'm an expert on education. So, um, that's one thing. The other thing is I, I'm kind of liking the, um, tone to this presentation, which is a celebration of the three principals who sit in front of us because you are to be celebrated for the tremendous work that you're putting in. Um, and I want you to hear that appreciation from me. If we could, if I could through the chair, ask, uh, Dr. Bernier, um, to please provide in an upcoming board update where we stand as compared to our peers in terms of the number of CSNI schools, please. Um, I'd like to see that, as you know, for the other nine largest districts plus our sister districts to the north and the south. Um, on slide eight, we talked about, uh, an improved walkthrough tool. Um, and I'm wondering whether that is a tool that will be used in all schools going forward or whether it's a tool that's only appropriate for a turnaround school.
So the tool that we're using, um, for the classroom walkthroughs is one that we use in all of our schools, um, K through 12.
All right. And then Doctors, uh, Dr. Bernier's comments on slide nine. Learning gains can't be calculated, um, but the goal really should be proficiency for all students all the time. And, and I'm kind of liking that shift. Understanding the impossibility of it, um, I, I like, I think that if you, if you focus on the larger goal, you're more likely to reach that goal. Um, so I like that shift. Sustainability, after-school tutoring at Manatee, what are we doing in terms of transportation for those students, please?
We are, um, not having buses because the, the busing, um, has been problematic and so, um, parents are going to be picking up their, their children. We're gonna offer, um, free after-school, um, support for parents that can't come at, at four-thirty when, when it ends. And so, um, parents will have until after they finish working to coming, uh, pick up their, pick up their students. The other thing that we're looking at, because we're identifying certain students that we really want to target, um, those students that are not able to come to after-school tutoring, we are going to pull them during the school day. So we're finding times during the school day because what these kids need is extra time. And so we're finding ways, whether it's eating lunch with them and tutoring them during, during lunch, um, doing something, uh, before school. So freeing the classroom teacher, um, who I, we, we've, we've always asked our classroom teachers to stand at the door to greet their, to greet their students, but that is a twenty-five minute block of time when they could really be pulling kids. So we've got paras or special area teachers that are now standing at the door greeting the students so that the teacher can be at the back of the room, working with, um, working with students.
So I like, I like, I like the fact that you're finding ways around the tutoring if a family can't do it. However, that's not ideal. The ideal is, is the after-school tutoring. Because if you're pulling a kid out of a class, they're missing instruction in something else. You're pulling a kid out of lunch or you're teaching him or her during lunch, they don't get lunch. So I'm wondering whether you can provide data to your superiors regarding how many families are in a situation where they can't provide transportation and their child's missing out on tutoring and maybe there's a way that we can provide that extra assistance to Manatee? I don't know, just a thought that I have. I, I know that there was, when my kids were at Pine Woods, there was an after-school opportunity for tutoring and it didn't matter to me. I mean, they could walk home, but there were a lot of families in, at Pine Woods that had to say no. So I would assume that you've got a lot too and I think that that data might be informative of additional supports we can provide.
Um, we do not take any students out of instruction, so that would never, um, occur.
All right.
It would be perhaps, um, we might take them out of a music class every so often or maybe out of a PE class every so often, but no, we would never take the students out of instruction. That's way too important.
Understood. All right, great. Um, slide eighteen. How did the master schedule review at Fort Myers Middle impact class size?
We did not go over any of the class size limits. Um, we are a smaller school just by numbers. Um, and so what it did is, you know, just two heads or three heads better than one theory. And as they worked, as our APC, Dr. Fitzpatrick, worked with the, uh, the district individual, the central office individuals, uh, we were able to consolidate and streamline. If we had a group of, uh, twelve kids over here and seventeen kids over here, we put them together, but then also worked the schedule around so that if we're not gonna put over the number in that room, uh, then we would work the schedule out, uh, so that while it does cause some disruption of maybe their regular schedule, but we keep them with their teachers, uh, so that, you know, maybe you don't have math first period, now you have it second period, but the majority of the group still has it first period.
Great.
Though, that's just an example of working through the master schedule.
Great. Thank you. And then to Dr. Bernier, um, when do we expect these Promethean panels to be completely installed district-wide? Again, you can do that in a board member update unless you know now.
I don't have the exact, um, numbers for all of them, but Promethean panels are, um, progressing. They're already in our number of our schools, but I'll have to get the actual number of schools that actually need either them to be fully installed or we're already in the process of working on a refresh. So I will make sure that's provided to the board.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And then if you can go back to the slide for the Fort Myers Middle data, please? So we have, um, ELE, ELE, ELA at twenty-two percent. How do you have twenty-two percent ELA and eighty percent civics? Like, don't you have to be able to read and write to do civics? Am I crazy?
No, you're not crazy. Um, sorry.
Not...
At that, that...
Not that you tell me if I am.
Um, there was a strategic approach with moving into civics, uh, with, with the students and identifying a group of students who were ready, uh, to take it. Um, so it's a smaller cohort of students that are in civics this year and there'll be a larger one next year, but with using the US history and world history teachers to start early addressing those civic standards, not, you know, not at the expense of it, but you talk about US history, there's plenty of opportunities to talk about civics and the development of our, our, um, of our government.
Excellent. I only have a couple more, um, chairpersons. Uh, Mr. Mangan, very, very powerful statement that you made about your ability to dig in, in a classroom and provide the assistance needed, um, because you have the coverage you need in the hallway. That was a very powerful statement and I'm, I'm grateful you identified that. I'm grateful to, to staff for providing you with that freedom. And then finally, uh, combination of behavior issues and academic struggle. When I talk to teachers who are teaching our Level Ones and Twos, they frequently, um, share stories about the difficulty of managing behavior and because you're managing behavior, you can't really get to the teaching. Um, and the other thing I hear, Dr. Bernier, is a, a lack of support from not, not necessarily administration, but perhaps the district in terms of appropriate consequences for students. So if you send a kid out of school because he's, you know, using his phone when he's not supposed to and the kid's gone for five minutes and he comes back to class and gets back on his phone, that teacher is like, you know, where's the support? So I, I don't know what the answer is there, but it is a common theme that I hear from teachers and I assume it's something that you all are facing on a regular basis as well. Those are my comments. Sorry, I went so long.
Ms. Jordan.
Wow. Um, well, a lot of the questions were already asked by my colleagues over here and I do really want to thank you all very much for everything that you're doing. And of course, Mr. Mangan, thank you for jumping in there at Fort Myers Middle. I think that knowing that you were at Colloquia that one time and everywhere you have been, I, I've always watched you and I know that you are the right person to be there right now. So I really do appreciate you being there. And because that was my children's school as well. But looking at everything, um, I was wondering about the, the mentoring again. I, I thought that the, the unified, uh, grant that we're gonna be, that's on the agenda, I thought that that is providing, does it not provide transportation or part of that? Or maybe I just misread or, I read so much last night, but I thought that it had, um, it was providing transportation for... But I thought that it had, it was providing transportation for like after-schools or mentoring as part of the Unified School Improvement Grant that will be going to the three schools.
May, it's an option. However, the money is there.
Okay. I thought I read that. Okay, so I'm not crazy.
It's just actually getting the buses, the problem.
Okay, because we don't have the... And then the mentor program at Manatee, who does that? Is that from outside community members that are doing the mentoring?
No, it's an in-house program. So we have our Student Services Committee, which is our MTSS person, our dean, and our administrative team, and also our guidance counselor. We have identified students that we've either for attendance, behavior, or just need someone that cares about them. And so there's a strategic place that that person stands every morning, and the one or two students that they are mentoring know to come to them. And it's really, in most cases, very informal. So we check in in the morning and then check out at the very end of the day, again, standing, you know, near the buses. And it's really just having a person that, you know, says, "Have a good day," or "Make sure you get your homework done," or "I, you know, hope you have a nice evening."
Okay, kind of like a wellness.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's great. Because I think that you did have a program that was community-based at one time over there. I thought after-school that they had it for the boys. And that's why I thought maybe this was the same one.
I'm not aware of that.
Okay. And then the other, because everyone has already asked most of the questions, again, I just really want to thank you all very much. And Mr. Mangan, I want to tell you that Fort Myers Middle represented at the dance.
Yes, they did.
I just wanted to let you know that they were excellent. And just watching them, it was a real representation of who they are as a school. So I wanted to give you a kudos on that.
I'll make sure Mrs. English gets that.
Thank you. I'm done.
Mr. Blending, excuse me.
Well, honestly, I just, like, wow. You guys have knocked my socks off. There's nothing that brings me more joy than to see a school going up and increasing. And that has to be spreading throughout the school. I would imagine your morale has increased also because I'm going to put on my coach's hat for a minute. And when you start to go to the gym, or you start putting in that extra time in the gym and you see results, you're motivated. And I want to encourage you and your staff not to let your foot off the gas because you're headed in the right direction. So thank you so much. I have so many great things to say, but I'm going to talk really fast, so we aren't here all afternoon. First of all, the attendance, I know one of you brought that up, that you're running the attendance records. I would say that is something that is incredibly important at every single school. I'm sure you agree. It's really hard for a child to learn and a teacher to teach when they're not together. So I don't know if that's something that we can, if that's a report that goes out weekly, monthly, you know, how often is our truancy involved in that? And that would be maybe across the district. Because I know that these three schools are not the only schools struggling right now with attendance issues. So that was, that kind of rung in my ears. I love the long-term guest teacher idea. I have always thought that would be such a great, a great role for somewhat, for each school to have one or two on campus and on those rare days where they're not necessary in the classroom. I know a couple weeks ago, we went back to the, kind of like our HR, we were talking about increasing morale, and we talked about the principal at, remind me again, Mr. Fisher, I'm sorry, through the chair, the Highlands.
Adam Lane.
Yes. And maybe that, maybe those people are also, you know, kind of your spirit leaders, and they are on days that they aren't able to attend a class or you don't need them, there's other roles that they play on campus. So I would love to look at something like that for every single school, because I can tell you, there's something that day someone can do, even if they're not in the guest, the media specialists could use some help, you know? I would love to see your idea, I'm sorry if this was Mrs. Sherman or Dr. Noss, the idea of the walkthrough, I think you nailed it when you said, "Let's take the mystery out of the walkthrough." I think when you're at your principal meetings, I would encourage you to speak up about that idea and share that idea because it does take some of the heat off of the teacher doing the walkthrough, and them to know, this isn't a gotcha time. And I think the more that, you know, we're trying to increase teacher morale too at the same time. So I would encourage that to be something that's utilized at every school. Pineapple visits, adorable, love it, so cute for elementary. And that's another thing where, "Hi, I'm here to help, I'm not here to judge," you know? And I think that if that idea or feeling was lifted, I think teachers would feel a lot better about asking for help. So a couple of questions. The fast testing, the prior-year students, they were taking the, are you ready?
FSA.
FSA, excuse me, the FSA. The progress monitoring, fast testing, maybe this is a question I can ask the principals and staff. When I am talking to teachers across the district, and just the feeling I get, they have become frustrated with the fast testing. I guess it's maybe a cumbersome test, it's taking quite some time. Some schools have reported two to three hours whenever I was able to attend a school, which is taking instructional time out of the classroom. So maybe, maybe through the chair, superintendent, you can help me with that? If you're hearing that same thing, I'm hearing two to three hours for progress monitoring tests, so therefore they're losing instruction time? Can you?
Couple of quick answers, and I will defer to the experts who have been administering the test in their own building. PM1, the first round of fast testing was, at very best, cumbersome.
Uh-huh.
It was a new test, new technology, new ways. Clearly, at elementary, we ran into additional issues regarding young people having to grow accustomed to a new manner and means. And yes, the amount of time was well beyond what the state expected, and we reported that at the time in PM1's window to the board. The state, so much so across the state, that the state looked at the exam, they looked at what they were trying to accomplish, they looked at some adjustments to the testing. I have gotten some reports that PM2, to some extent, some of that was replicated. But in other cases, I have reports that it was a little bit better. I'm going to let, and I'll turn it to our principals in just a second. But you raised a very interesting point around some of the other progress monitoring we do. This will be the last year we can do that. So while you were relying upon an FSA in the years past, and we had progress monitoring, because the FSA was just administered once. So we had to do progress monitoring along the way, in a sense, to help predict where our schools were and were going to be. This year, we have the fast windows, PM1, PM2, and then the final one, which, if you will, counts. We are still running our own processes behind because we want to see the predictability of fast and what our predictability was showing us from our other progress monitoring. Our other progress monitoring by state rule will have to diminish going into next year. This was the last year that we asked the board to sort of continue so we could have some predictability. As to the amount of time PM2 took in relationship to PM1, I'll defer to my experts who are on the ground administering it.
So PM1 did take a long time, but a lot of it was growing pains. The students had never seen it before, so it wasn't what they were used to. The PM2, which just happened, we were able to finish the majority of our students within two hours. Though we have students who get extra time, and, you know, of course, those took a little bit longer, but two hours and we were finished with it, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to piggyback off of the after-school question that Board Member Patrico was asking about. And I'm sorry, I would have to go back to see which school. You were talking about doing the after-school tutorial process or program along with a science club, because obviously that's also something that's being tested. Where is that coming out of after-school funds? What bucket does that, where is that coming from, the funds that are covering that?
The science club is going to be during the day. So it will be Mondays and Tuesdays during fifth-grade specials time. But we're going to let them know that they have been especially chosen to, and we have great, great plans. We're going to do a lot of hands-on investigations, and so it's going to be fun. And I have no doubt that they will love having their principal and assistant principal there with them, supporting them, cheering them on. And so that is not anything that's costing us anything.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And then my one last thing. Dr. Noss, if you would come back to that very easy slide that's easy to read and follow, yep, Slide 12. I just wanted to ask you, is that posted somewhere in your school, somewhere easy for teachers to see and be reminded about all the steps? Is that in the staff room or something?
That's a great question. It is in our office in the PLC room. And when we reviewed it with everyone in our PLCs, they were each given a copy.
Okay. Awesome. I love that.
Thank you. I'm going to give kudos to my assistant principal, who put all my thoughts onto the slide.
It looks just like a word cloud. I love it. So thank you. But no, I just, I thank you so much to all three of you and to the staff that's behind the scenes helping them. And please let your educators and staff know how much we appreciate their hard work too. I think that all of you have the same mindset. When I was listening, not a single kid do you want to slip through the cracks. And I really, that really, I really felt that from you. So thank you so much for the presentation and all the hard work you're doing. That's all I have. Thank you.
Chair.
Yes.
My apologies, one quick. I just want to clarify for the record, my answer to Member Langford Fleming was Adam Haines, Adam Lane from Haynes City, and that was to the board. I just want to make sure that was clarified on the record, if it was not audible.
Thank you.
Ms. Morgan.
Okay, so everybody's talked about the specifics. I'm going to see, I don't know whether I can make sense out of my notes. But first of all, let me go back to the 23 failing schools that we had about 10 years ago when I came on the board. It seemed to me at the time that the focus on expectations and accountability was there. And that was part of changing that culture that helped us sort of clear that hurdle. But I don't think I ever heard the word rigor. And what I hear from all of the work that you're doing is that you're basically building on a structure that we did have at one time, but you're building in the ability to deep-dive on the rigor piece. And that's where I think, that's what excites me. I will say, well, let's see, with respect to the district now, these are schools that teachers don't want to go to. So we end up with young teachers, new teachers in these schools. How do we change the allocation of teachers in these populations? Mr. Mangan hit another nail on the head with respect to this. The research shows that highly effective teachers move students faster. Therefore, what you really want is highly effective teachers in a classroom where kids have the greatest needs. It's a resource allocation problem. And I think that's a problem, that's something we need to be talking about and addressing at the district. I know we're considering changing the HR process so that we have, as a district, more control over teacher movement. But, you know, when you look at the numbers, and this is, you guys have done great work. But when you look at the numbers, the pace at which these three schools are moving ahead is not the same pace as the state or the district. So we're making progress, but there's got to be something more than what you all are doing in the classroom and in the school that we can do to make a difference with respect to your resources. So I think, yeah, I think essentially, that's my comment. I will conclude by saying that I do believe this is a culture that's sustainable, the way you have structured it and have all of this discipline embedded in it. I think it will be awesome when you all are able to move it out to, your experiences out to the rest of the district, because I think it will have a long-term impact on the quality of public education in this district. So I'm really grateful for the work you've done. I'm really, really, really impressed. But I do think we also have a responsibility to provide more support to you all. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Ken, thank you. You're doing a great job. I was sort of excited here because I had two points I wanted to bring up. I get to go last. Jada, you took one of them.
I'm sorry.
Which was the attendance. Ms. Morgan, you took the other one, which was the teachers. I was really excited. But again, the schools need our help, and y'all are doing, you have a great plan, and I'm sure it's going to pay off. And by that, I'm partial, but go Ripples. Being a former alumni, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Oh, Ms. Jordan, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to say too, on our agenda for Tuesday, there's two items on there that will impact all three of these schools too. So I just want to, and so that's more resources that they will be able to have as well. Thank you.
Again, thank you again. Dr. Bernier, do you have anything?
No, sir. Just to say thank you to the staff again for their presentation and to the principals.
We're now going to move on to the agenda review for February 7th action meeting. Dr. Bernier?
Number of questions, but I'd like to handle that last sort of quasi-question before we begin. We can certainly come back through a board update and provide to the board what we're doing in terms of differentiated pay at these schools, both for teachers and for the principal and the principal leaders. So there is a differentiate in pay as an attractor. Maybe it's not significant enough, and maybe we need to look at that. But we can, we certainly can bring that back through board, tell you what we're doing, and then open up a dialogue regarding these particular schools and other schools like these that are hard to staff. The other part that I would ask that we also update, and I believe this was already asked in my last direct report, was I want you to get an understanding of the hiring process and how certain schools get to start the hiring process ahead of the others. There are some schools that are still difficult to staff. Teachers are hard to come by no matter what school you're in. But there are some specific schools like these three and some others that we consider hard-to-staff schools, and we give additional time and give them first run at our candidates so they might be able to secure. And then the additional dollars sometimes is the deal maker, not the deal breaker. So we can come back and talk about that in another time. I got several questions regarding the upcoming agenda for February 1st. Several of them are involved around the UNISIG grant allocations. So I'll start with the first one, which is, oh, I'm sorry, H4 and then H5. The first one is a recruitment and retention bonus for staff that qualify at the BSI schools. Fort Myers Middle, Gaborirahips, and Manatee Elementary Schools. The list of those eligible bonuses was provided by the Florida Department of Education based upon the criteria of who was working at the school on September 15th and who was still being effective or highly effective on their VAM value. And this was available for both teachers and administrators. Without getting into a specific name, there was a question that I received regarding payment to these people. These dollars are paid in two installments. They're after each semester. So we don't pay people a bonus prior to them completing the work for that semester. So at the end of first semester and the end of second semester, as each work semester is completed, then the employee, if they're currently still at the school, receives that, receives the dollars at that time for payment. This is for all the individuals on the list. So this particular individual that was mentioned in the board member's question would have received the first semester because they were there during first semester, but they would not receive the second semester allocation. The second UNISIG or... The second UNICEF or H4 allocation for schools uses a focus primarily on professional development and stipends for the additional time to work on standard-based alignment at all three of the schools previously named. This grant also provides additional time for summer training, boot camps, or after-school programs for students, virtual reality technology, or another supplement support in math, science, material supplies, and additional staff at two of these identified schools. The plan was submitted in August with revisions through October, but was only approved by the D O E recently. So that's why we're coming back to you this coming Tuesday night for approval of the UNICEF allocations. Mr. Chair, I don't know if you want me to pause and take any questions related to that, or would you like me to proceed?
We'll ask for questions. Do we have any questions? Ms. Jordan?
Well, thank you for bringing that up, Ms. Jevanelli, because that was my first thing I seen when I read that. It just clicked in, the individual. So if a person is no longer with us, they still receive that grant?
If they meet the allocation of the particular for being present during the semester and when the allocation is paid, if they are still there, then they would receive that allocation.
Okay. But if they're gone, it does not, it goes into a pot?
It would potentially go to the new individual who is now in that position, but I will get that clarified for you.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question with that, when I was looking at that grant as well, I was looking at the, I thought it was interesting when you see in the effective, there was only one highly effective out of all of them, all the three schools, and then only seven, six to seven effective ones out of how many teachers? That's, I thought that was interesting. So that's something that we can build on.
I think the other thing to note there is there's a difference between an annual evaluation of a teacher of highly effective and effective. And specifically in this case, this is a calculated value-added model known as a VAM score. What you're looking at is what the state says based upon the standardized testing, whether those educators meet a highly effective or effective rating based upon the value-added model, which is a difficult formula to describe because it's sort of hidden from public view. But it does create a score for our teachers, and that's particularly in this case what makes them effective or highly effective.
Thank you. So that does not mean that our other teachers are not effective. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clarified. Thank you.
Any other questions? Please proceed.
Mr. Chair, also on the consent agenda item regarding human resources, J2, the approval to revise the job descriptions. As we've said in the past, we're always reviewing and revising job descriptions to fit the current needs of the district. Job descriptions should never be something, and they have been in the past, something that sits and never gets changed. We have to continue to look at our job descriptions as a dynamic process that requires monitoring and various items need to be adjusted based upon the current market. You actually discussed the revisions at last week's board briefing. The minimum quals in one particular job description were revised along with the preferred qualifications. That was to ensure that some of the candidates we were getting that were being eliminated from getting to the interview table had an opportunity to get there because they met very significant qualifications, but they didn't necessarily have the highest terminal degree. The old job descriptions, which were also included, the revisions, were attached to the last week's briefing agenda, but we can provide them again to the board. So, this, you know, there were two job descriptions. One was around school psychologist support. The other one was around our safety coordinator. I'll give you the safety coordinator as a legitimate example. We are getting qualified police officers applying for our safety and security coordinator. If you understand current promotional standards for people within a police department, they can certainly join coming straight out of the academy. They can also join with an A S. Bachelor's degrees and other things depend on how far they want to promote. In some cases, they are very happy being a patrol officer, and that's the way they want to begin their career and end it. So there's no need to move to the bachelor's, and yet those individuals may be highly qualified. I promised this board I would not bring individuals who didn't meet the minimum quals. We believe that we have some individuals who would meet the standards of this job and be able to do it very well, but because they don't meet minimum quals, they're sifted out before they get to the interview table. We're trying to open up the number of potential candidates we can talk to so that we can ensure that we have positions filled with people who can complete the work.
Any questions? Follow-up?
Also on consent information systems, J2, approval to pay back Sourcewell R F P. It is very costly. This piggyback is to allow the procurement of network equipment, which is, we refresh all network gear on a five-year refresh cycle, and we are in that position to do more of it this summer. By the way, Prometheum Board's refresh will be completed by this summer. All schools will have been taken care of by the summer. So, this bid contains network switches, wireless access points, uninterruptible power supplies, the big giant equipment that hides inside what I call M D Fs and I D Fs, main distribution frameworks, individual frameworks. So the signal comes into the school, something has to push that out into all of our classrooms and into our wireless system. These are those heavy pieces of equipment that lie behind the scenes. So it can be very expensive, but this is money the district has budgeted in a five-year refresh so that we can keep that equipment up to date. If you need more information about network switches, wireless access points, or uninterruptible power sources, I'll be happy to provide it because our chief information officer, Dwayne Alton, has given me Kopey's notes.
Yes, Ms. Jevanelli.
That was just my question, actually. I just, I know it's a lot of money, and I think, I think you said that in English, but it could have been in Spanish for me, because that just is my point is just, you know, what is it? And just a little detail, just for the community to understand that, you know, these are ongoing expenses that we have that reoccur, and it's expensive.
When you, it's a great point. When you buy a piece of technology, it starts to get old, the moment you buy it. And anybody who's owned a laptop for more than three years understands that the newest and greatest laptops are faster, better, and cheaper. So while these are expensive, as technology continues to improve, it gets faster, better, and cheaper. So as we refresh, we want to make sure that a brand-new school like Amontesaro has all the bells and whistles. We want to make sure that our other schools that may be behind in that process are also being upgraded at the same time. So that's what this particular piggyback allows us to do.
Thank you.
My last one, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Go ahead.
Consent operations, L2, approval of the sale of the ex-ent vacant land located at Palomino Lane in Fort Myers. Why are we just finding out now what happened with our contracts, what happened in the past? I will do my very best, since I was not here. The original contract on the Palomino property was canceled by the buyer on April 20th of 2020. This was during the height of the COVID pandemic, and many real estate transactions throughout the county and country were canceled due to the uncertainty of the quarantine lockdown periods. You go back to those original days where really nobody knew what was transpiring. A cancellation notice was rendered to the director of the planning department at that time, who's no longer with us. We are aware, we are not aware if this information was passed to the board because we cannot find any official communication to all of you. But the district was also in a lockdown at the time, not making excuses, just establishing why or why not. As for the current contracted, the real property and the part of the organization responsible did not relist the property after the contract was canceled. That led to this contract, which was brought to us directly from a purchaser, not because of any property listings. The board was notified of the intent to declare the property a surplus prior to the original contract in 2019. The staff proceeded to continue to solicit people to purchase based upon the board's action to not pull the property back. The board had made the decision to sell. The contract was canceled in '20, so the process just continued. The combined, this, all of these actions, combined with an unsolicited offer, approximately $1 million more than that original contract was canceled, led to the planning department to bring it forward for sale.
Yes, Ms. Jevanelli.
So thank you very much. I'm the one that brought this forward. I think it's important that we evaluate our properties and what we have and what we don't have and the need in a little more timely. This has been listed, I think it goes back before 2019, if I'm not mistaken, because I think Mr. Mark Mora was one, it was part of the recommendation, the package that him and Don Huff had created, and we listed several pieces of property, and then we pulled some back, or I think they were, things changed. And so, I think it's, I want to bring this back up as a board topic and conversation, you know, what we have, and update the new board with what we have. Land is valuable. God's not making any more of it. So, I mean, what we have is important. I'm not going to, I'm not fighting this sale per se, that's all, I want to be clear on that. But the real estate market changes quite frequently. And so, I think it's important that we stay on top of it and not let things, you know, just keep our eyes on the, on it a little bit better laser-focused, in my opinion. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may respond?
Yes.
I think one of the board members said it earlier about the art and science of teaching. When it comes to the art and science of real estate, right, I kind of feel like sometimes when teaching and learning presents to all of you. I mean, it's not my forte. I will tell you that I told all of you in your one-on-ones just yesterday and one prior on Monday, that our plan is to bring the property process back before you from our property division through our new temporary COO. That's Mr. Wagner and his group, because we think it's important for us all to understand how we acquire property and how that process works, and then how we also determine and then move through a sale process. We have been subject recently to a number of individuals representing individual parties as well as other government entities about some of the property we currently own and whether things are for sale. I think people hear us talk about our financial condition and how we're recovering from the hurricane, and they are poised and ready to potentially purchase from us. I can tell you, currently, we have no other properties for sale. We are in the process, as you know, of still looking in particular areas of the county where we're experiencing growth. We're looking to procure property. I'm learning that our procurement process is a very interesting thing because we don't want to tip our hand too far, because then people realize we're out looking and, let's just say, prices adjust. But I will defer to any real estate expert that I have who helped me, to help me with that. So I think the comments from board member Jevanelli are well-taken and well-received, considering we have, all of us have a lot to learn about how we do this. And we are going to be in the buying market for some property, but we're also probably going to have to look at some of the parcels we own and decide what we'd like to do with them long-term if we don't have a demographic need for them. And I think that's the critical component. The longer we can hold on to them, to Ms. Jevanelli's comment, I don't know much property that diminishes in value. So it's an asset that we have, but at the appropriate time for the appropriate reasons, it isn't an asset that this board can determine they would like to determine what fair market value would be if we don't need it for future growth.
Yes, Ms. Jevanelli, follow-up.
And this is one of those properties. That's, to be clear, that's not, because how many, I think it's 19 acres or something, I think.
This particular property, the previous boards determined was not of value before signing off on anything and bringing it to all of you. This is not a piece of property that we can utilize specifically in the future. It makes sense for us at this point to make the sale, potentially using those dollars to procure those other properties that we're going to need moving forward where our growth is occurring.
Ms. Jordan?
I was just going to say that the last communication we had regarding this property was in 2022, February 23rd of 2022, from Ms. Evil. And that was written to a person that was interested in the property, stating that the property was purchased by the district in 2005 and for use for future schools and district facilities, and then goes on to talk about everything else, just so there was something back then. Just want you to be aware of that.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Benir. We'll move on to the Good of the Order. I'm going to go a little bit out of step. I'm going to ask Ms. Patrica to lead off, if she would.
Thank you. Yeah, so just by way of background, so my expectation with, for Dr. Benir, he sends us a briefing memo. I expect that his staff will have previewed that memo, read it for grammatical errors and Scribner's errors and misspellings before he presents it to us and before it's available to the public through a public records request or some other way for public consumption. I don't think it's my job as a board member to be editing the material sent to me by the superintendent. And I believe the same is true for policies that come our way. I don't know if you all saw the email that I sent you. That's an example of just one policy. And I got to give you the background. I taught legal research and writing semester after semester after semester after semester. So those errors jump off the page at me, and it's really difficult for me to understand the substance of something when there are errors there, because my eyes see the errors first. So I'm bringing this up at the board table to get an understanding as to whether that's your expectation, too. Is it your expectation that we, as board members, should be doing this editing, or is it your expectation that staff should be doing this editing?
Board members, any comments? Yes, Ms. Jordan?
I would hope that it, to me, it's the staff bringing it to us, ready to go.
Yes, Ms. Jordan. I mean, Ms. Morgan. I did it again.
I know, that's okay.
There's two of us.
No, I have to agree, because I've sent, I have sent similar memos for a period of time to legal staff, saying that, you know, grammatical corrections, trying to understand content, whatever. It is my expectation that we get something that is ready for publication. And frankly, if, you know, I'm confused by what is there, the public, if it's not cleared, cleaned up, will be confused by what is there. So, no, I have every expectation that the stuff that comes to us is print-ready and of concern to us, is not the Scribner stuff, but the content and the intent. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Okay. And just so you know, I used you as an example, just to show that's my expectation across the board. It's not, it's not a targeted expectation. Okay, that's one thing. The other thing is, if I may, ask the question about redlining of policies as well. So a policy comes to us for a first reading, we look at it, we provide feedback, and then it's my understanding that going forward, when that policy comes in front of us again, it's not going to be redlined. And board docs and NEOL have the ability to redline for a second reading. So I'm asking the board if you'd be willing to support having those policies come in front of us a second time for redlining so that I can see that the changes we requested were made, as opposed to having to read the whole thing all over again, not necessarily remember what changes we requested, if they're redlined when it comes in front of us, and that's how it's always been done. If it's redlined when it comes in front of us, that second reading, it just makes it easier for me to... Am I making sense? Ms. Morgan, you look a little confused.
I'm puzzled, so, sorry. I may be a little slow. First time it comes to us, no, it's redlined when it comes to us the first time.
No, these are brand-new policies.
Brand-new policies.
For, so they'll all be in black and white.
Okay.
And then we ask for the changes, the second reading, they're not supposed to be coming in front of us redlined. I'm asking for...
Oh, absolutely.
From the board to have them redlined.
Thank you. Now I understand. I appreciate your comment.
Okay, those were my issues for Good of the Order. Thank you, sir.
I'm, I know most of these policies are coming from NEOL, and I'm sort of disappointed that they're coming, because they're just cut and paste. You know, I would expect that they would, should do a better job. We should probably contact them and request that, too. But I understand your concern there.
Yeah, if I, I have, at an F S B A conference, expressed my disappointment individually to them, but I agree, perhaps something from the board would be good. We're paying, I think, $100,000 for really flawed, in some cases, items. That being said, I do think that it's incumbent upon staff to present it to us in a form that's better than what we're getting. Thank you.
Any other comments on that? Yes?
Just for clarification, the first time that the...
Just for clarification, the first time that the Neola policies are coming to you, they will be in black and white. When they come to you for the first reading, any changes that the board has made will be highlighted, just like we do normally with policies now. When they come to the second reading, they will also be highlighted. So it's only the first time that you're viewing them, there won't be any changes to them, but first reading and second reading, as we do currently, will still have the changes for the board to be able to see what those changes are.
That's not what I was told in my one-on-one today. Sorry. That's not what I was told in my one-on-one today. I was told to bring it to the board, so I did.
Well, I think the question that you posed to me was that the Neola policies that are coming, like in the 8000s and 9000s, that staff is reviewing, will have changes that staff has made, but when it comes to the board, it will be a clean copy, and then for first reading, second reading, just like we always do, they'll have changes. So if there was a miscommunication, Ms. Patrica, my apologies.
Thank you for that clarification. And I'm actually going to jump next to the Good of the Order. I'd sent all y'all a email yesterday. I find myself on both the audit and the finance committee. And if we could, there it is. Magic. And almost every nonprofit and every board does not have the same person on both of those committees. I would like to stay on the audit committee and trade with someone for the finance spot that I have. I didn't know if anyone would like to make me an offer. If I have multiple offers, I'll just have to choose one. But I think it should be done in the public, so that's why we're doing... Yes, Ms. Patrica?
I'm happy to let you change, but I have been on finance already for two years, and at the same time, I've also been on DAC for three years. I think DAC would be a wonderful opportunity for you, but again, I've already done finance. So if you get no other offers, you can take my position, and I'll take yours.
Are there any other offers?
Chairpersons, I am happy to jump onto the finance committee. I do serve on the construction and the esteroeducation committee. Is, are one of those something that you would be interested in?
I'm happy to trade construction.
Or, Ms.?
I could jump on construction. I've had finance as well.
Okay.
So construction, I have not had. And I would take that if you took finance. And that way, he doesn't have to take that one as well.
Okay.
Okay, wait, you're coming off of, this is getting confused now.
I'm not taking, I'm not coming off of anything. So if Ms. Langford Fleming will take financing, because I've already had that, as well as, like Ms. Patrica has stated, I would be more than happy to take construction because I've never sat on construction. So I would take construction. That way, it leaves you off of that because you have enough to do already.
Okay. Does that put too many on your plate, though? That's the only thing I was wondering.
No.
Because you're just adding another one.
And I don't have, I do not have a committee, so that would give me a committee.
Okay. I am fine with that. Any comments? Yes, Mr. Fisher.
I don't want to open a can of worms here, maybe this for...
Yeah, now it's on.
One of these days, I'll figure that out. I don't want to open a can of worms here, but maybe for future, when we're looking at things, when a new board is seated, maybe, I know the theory of why you would continue on from prior board, but maybe, you know, when a new board's seated, we should consider changing this for next, so this doesn't happen, so we can kind of schedule things out better. That's just a future comment.
Yes, Ms. J. Venelli.
So this, that is usually when we would have done this normally. That was changed about a year ago, if I'm not mistaken, to like the summertime in June, which would have been prior to the November election. But normally, this was done in the reorganization meeting. So that's a conversation that we could have.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, as I look at this list, I need an alternate, please, for the value adjustment board.
Since I'm free now, I'll take that one.
Excellent. Thanks.
Yes, Ms. J. Venelli.
And that's an actual vote that we do. It will come up on the, I don't know when can we get at it, but you need to know that. That's all I was going to say.
Yes, Ms. Jordan.
You are on it. You are the alternate.
I am the alternate.
No, he is the alternate. You are the alternate for the value adjustment board already.
On it for sure.
I was looking at the wrong year.
I'm sorry. I was, too.
So thank you for taking that. You're on it.
Can I resign? No, no, just kidding. Okay. All right, moving on. Mr. Fisher, do you have any Good of the Order?
No, but looking at this, I thought I was the alternate on that, because I'm getting emails on it. Originally, when it was listed, I was the alternate. Okay, that's, that's fine. So just baking term, clarify. No, no other comments. Thank you.
Attorney Brito, did you have a comment?
I just want clarity.
Okay.
Who is going to be the board liaison for the finance committee? Would that be Ms. Jordan?
Oh, Ms. Fleming.
Okay, so for the finance committee, it will be Ms. Fleming and Mr., and who's somebody else?
Construction will be Ms. Jordan.
Got it. Okay, so just from my mind, to make sure I'm clear, so Board Member Langford Fleming will be doing finance, and Board Member Jordan will be doing construction.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good of the Order, Ms. J. Venelli?
I have none. Thank you.
Ms. Patrica?
I'm done. Thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
I have nothing for Good of the Order. Thank you.
Ms. Data Fleming?
I have nothing today. Thank you.
And Ms. Morgan?
I have nothing. Thank you.
And I have nothing.
I do have something, I'm sorry. The only thing I wanted to remind you all of is that the governor's education budget just came out, so you might want to check that out.
Okay, seeing no other business, this meeting is adjourned. The time is 12, I mean, 2:32.
Don't forget it.